October 24, 2018. Okay. Tonight, the Board will be addressing the items identified on the agenda. A copy of tonight's agenda is on display on the west wall of the hearing room. Public comment on agenda items will be allowed during the public comment portion of the meeting. Before asking questions or making comments, please stand, state your name and address, and direct all of your comments to the Chair. Once the public comment portion of the meeting has been closed, further public comment will no longer be accepted. Tonight's zoning administrator, Manette Minier, will review and present to the Zoning Board of Appeals information on the specific requests identified on the agenda. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the last Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of September 26, 2018?
Still moved?
Is there a second? I'll support that. Is there any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that the Board approved the minutes of the meeting of September 26, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. The next item is unfinished business. Variance request 1805. Dwayne and Carol Heiser, 6920 Fortieth Avenue, are requesting to have a fence with a height of six foot feet in the front yard to be located at an undetermined distance from the road right-of-way. Exact and accurate dimensions were requested from the applicant and were not provided. A variance of an undetermined number of feet from the distance required in Section 3.8, which states that a fence may not exceed a height of three feet in a front yard, including the required and non-required front yard in a low-density residential district on a parcel of land described as PP number 70-14-20-100-018, located at 6920 Fortieth Avenue, Georgetown Township, Ottawa County, Michigan. The Zoning Board of Appeals tabled this request at the last meeting with a request for additional information. At this point in time, I'm requesting that zoning administrator, Manette Minier, would present to the Board your findings from the additional information portion of the supplemental staff report.
I'll make a motion to remove the item from the table.
Oh. I'll second that. It's moved and seconded to remove the item from the table. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. The request is removed from the table. Thank you very much.
Last meeting. Zoning Board of Appeals asked about a survey and ask for information from the Road Commission and Drain Commission and applicant business and information from the Township and the Road Commission. On the so-called, uh, uh, and, um, if you please, uh, 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 uh. Where, where, uh, uh, allow for those, uh, uh,
And I know that's a, it's a difficult place for me to go. I wanna help the Heizer. And I know you guys do too.
I don't agree with that. Um, we aren't granting a variance for a fence in the road right of way. All those laws are in place. All the laws are in place for maintenance of the road right of way, um, within the borders of your lot line. That's all stuff that goes from every lot in the township. Snow removal also. With drainage issue, this happens all the time. Um, people, it used to be that you had one catch basin in the rear yards of the lots for maybe four or five lots, and somebody would put up a utility building right in a drainage event, and it affected drainage in the next lot. Or somebody else would do, construct something in the lot. And there's constantly grading issues and everything. And the design of the house to the rear of the, the Heizers is such that it makes it very difficult to maintain the soil that was originally constructed in there. And I believe that soil was constructed because the Ottawa County Road Commission, they do inspections on that type of thing to make sure that the water doesn't run on the other property. When the builder developed that house with that particular lot, it made it difficult to keep that grade in, or that soil in the grade. And that just happens all the time. And that's something that generally doesn't end in court. It's usually the drain commissioners comes out and it just says, yeah, we got a problem here. You know, you guys need to work it out and everything. And, and it's the same thing with a, with a erosion issue, if not, in my opinion, significant. Um, it's a three-foot area between the city sidewalk and the fence, and it runs for probably forty feet to the west. And once the vegetation is secured in there, I don't think you're gonna see a problem in there. And that was my intention of having the drain commission to look at it, so that they can look at it, they can explain that it was built to specifications, they can explain what happened. And in some of their opinions, it's that it even happened during construction of the fence and not during construction of the sidewalk or the road or anything. So, I don't think it's litigious, whatever that word is, how you pronounce it, is what you may think. But I think we do owe it to the Heizers to look at this variance request as it pertains to a fence which is located on their lot line. That's, that's what we've been commissioned to do as a board of appeal. How we decide whether that meets the seven standards or not is, is up to us to decide. Whether the county or the township allows that variance, if granted, to stay in the road right of way, that's up to them. That's up to the township and the county. And, um, you know, that's not what we're commissioned to do. So, I respect what you're saying, Tom, and I understand it, but I don't necessarily agree. I guess I'm just looking at it in a different way.
Uh-huh. I, um, I, I fully get what you're saying. We're, we're charged with looking at this from the perspective of the seven standards. And, um, I, as soon as we begin to start massaging the standards, what ends up happening is, um, when the process unfolds the way it is bound to unfold, we, it is determined that the township's standards have no substance because they appear arbitrary. They simply, they're flexible, therefore they're arbitrary. It depends on what we decide. We don't live there.
It's not easy.
No. And that's what I would say too, is that I respectfully disagree with, here are the ordinance of the township, and if we grant a variance, well now, we're disregarding that. We're opening ourselves up, um, for legal liability. But then, every time we've granted a variance, we'd be doing the same thing. When we allow an accessory building in the required front yard, we're doing the same thing. We're allowing, we're breaking the rules. And that's the reason we have a zoning board of appeals is because we have ordinances that are kind of a catch-all. And for most, most of the time, ninety-eight percent of the work. But then there are certain cases that are unique, that have certain elements that say, you know what? That rule just doesn't apply, and that's why you would apply for a variance to vary from that ordinance because it, it is a good general rule, but in this case, you know, whatever particular case, it just doesn't fit in because of the circumstances and other issues, we wouldn't allow that variance. So that's why we have that zoning board of appeals, to be able to figure from it. Now, it's still gotta meet the seven standards. And that's what I've always said with seven standards is, with every variance you could, depending on how it's written, lean it one way or another.
Mm-hmm.
Some things are just cut and dried, you know, no, no getting around it, but, um...
Just a note, and, you know, one of the things we look at, if we say, no, we're not gonna grant a variance in here, but this is a request that, you know, we feel should be granted. But the way to handle it is to have the planning commission look at changing the ordinance. This is one that I want, recommend the planning commission change the ordinance. I think the way the ordinance is stated, it works out good. The one thing that I talked to Manette about a little bit, that the planning commission will try to do, is the next time a plat comes in, in a situation like this where they have a sixty-six-foot road right of way, and you have houses of different architectural styles, you know, a different era or whatever, where they want, the developer wants to have a separation or an entry statement that separates the differing styles, that we would instruct the engineer to say, listen, a six-foot fence, you know, privacy fence, is allowed on their, on their, um, property line right now. If that's what you want, and that's what the neighbors want, instruct it now, or instruct it now before the plat is built. Because this was allowed before the plat was built. You know, it's right across the street, there's a six-foot fence there. And the developer wants a fence. I think the majority of the residents in that plat would like this fence. This particular neighbor would like the fence, or the applicant would like the fence. But, we still have to meet those standards. And the, we're gonna do, as a planning commission, everything we can to make sure this doesn't happen again by the route that I'd mentioned, where we talk to the developer and we talk to the engineer and say, listen, if you're gonna deal with this, deal with this before the, the plat is constructed and not afterwards.
Yep, and that's something I talked to Manette about too, I'm just working. Um, was, I, I kinda feel like it is partly the fault of the township for not notifying. I mean, we don't have, there's no expectation that every resident knows every single ordinance that's on the books. Like suddenly, a lot of people who live in a corner lot, who bought a corner lot, don't even realize they have two front yards. So it's one of those things where, this is a unique case where they only had one front yard, and then one day that changed. And then, at that point, I think the township or the developer should have, just like we'll send out, um, letters at a three-hundred-foot radius for a variance, this is gonna be a road now. What was your neighbor's driveway in their yard? No more. It's gonna be an entrance. Notify them of, here are some of the things coming, you know, contact the township, how this will affect you because what was your side yard? You could put a fence right on the lot line. Now it's a front yard. Now we have setbacks changed. So that's, it's a whole different volume and to let them know, which is, you know, not relevant. But also, one or two, the developer, did they provide a topographical map on, would assume, to let them know that there was an elevation change? Cause then that gets into, well, to their property, they can do what they want. But can they raise it up thirty foot and have deep sides? So it's, there's so many unique circumstances with this particular, um, request.
A couple of things there. I think the planning commission could shoulder that blame rather than township office, you know, to, um, give that information out. But the other thing is, with preliminary plat approval, basically what we're doing is approving the plat layout with a preliminary plat approval, and that's when the public hearing is held. And we show how the lots are gonna be laid out. And then that allows the developer to come in and say, okay, now we're gonna spend the time and money on construction plans. And that's when the elevation of the road is determined. And that's where all this other stuff came in a bit afterwards. You know, what the height of the road was being, was gonna be, where the city sidewalk was gonna be. And that was a negotiation process because the Heizers made it clear that they did not want their fence disturbed. And, um, they did not want their, their shrubbery disturbed. So, the developer and the county was trying to work with those criteria. And that's a little bit how we ended up the way we did. But I still believe that they developed it with decent criteria. And I don't, I can't find fault with the developer, or the road commission, or the drain commission, so. But those are my findings.
And that's that. What was the current grade, um, and even looking at a, you know, a site plan, being familiar with site plans, trying to decipher. We had that even with, um, mowing woods with that, um, minimum building opening for the egress window. Look at trying to decipher, oh, what is the elevation change? Where is it? I mean, it's, we're looking for it trying to find. So it is very difficult to find. I can see how that could get missed. But, you know, the original grade of that, if it was farmland, I don't think it started ramping up. The developer brought in all that and, uh, and I'm sure they didn't think, ooh, let's see if we could sneak this through, you know? It was just like, well, we need to raise the elevation, so we're gonna have a walkout from, you know, daylight basement, so we need to bring it up. They didn't think about, you know, all the consequences down the road.
But the bottom line, as we still have to look at this variance request and see what's if it meets the standards, the seven standards.
Yep.
And I would suggest we do that right now, but...
Yeah, I, I, I would agree. I think, uh, I, I don't know what better way than to address each standard independently. Um, standard one. Manette, can you put the review up so that, uh, we can see it? Correct, please. Your original review with the standard chart. It was page seventeen of twenty-six. Okay, standard one, granting the variance will be in the public interest, and we'll ensure that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed. I think the staff report indicated that the zoning, or the, uh, planning commission and the township board had revisited this in 2013 and had determined that, um, the censuring, uh, ordinance was correct as it was, and declined to change it. I think that validates, uh, the no determination in that box.
Is there anybody that disagrees? Because if there's three people that disagree, then it seems like the variance request is still the alive.
Yeah, I, I would disagree. Um, I, now, it depends on what the interpretation of a public interest is because it's quite apparent that a public in that area facility is more than happy with it.
Yeah. You know, you, you look at, one of the things that I think about with the fence that I considered right away, and it's because of what I do for a living, is when you have roads coming into, um, residential areas, and you have headlights or light impact that is washing across people's windows. And because that wasn't there before, you had two established residences, now you're adding an entrance into a development. And a lot of times, the landscaping ordinance will require a buffer area of, and it can be fencing, and it can be, um, more opaque or, or plant material that you can't see through. So when I look at the fence, I see it as blocking headlights, you know, entering their yard, which they didn't have an opportunity to, to arrange their home or, or situate their property in a way that would combat against that because the development wasn't there. So that to me is one, one issue. And the fact, like what you said, that, um, the neighbors like the fence. They like the fact that it's there. They, it, it does kinda give an entrance appeal to the development. So that to me is a safety factor because you see the, the entrance into that development because all the fence and the potential landscaping, which I think the Heizers have indicated that they intend to dress up that area between the sidewalk and the fence and maintain it. You know, that to me is a safety issue because now people are just, you know, slowing down for the entrance because they see it.
Yeah, and I think, I, I agree with you. I had written it down at the last meeting about the headlights, you know, windows, and especially considering the fact that because of the increased height of the road grade,
Mm-hmm.
to get those lots higher, how you're putting headlights an extra three foot higher than normal where, so, you could do a three-foot fence, well, that would block it in the normal case, but when you have a car that's an extra three foot higher, the headlights are going right over it. So a six-foot is what you would need at that point, just to block the headlights. But I did highlight that as one of the issues. Um, and I'm not sure that might even fall under, um... I'd have to see. But I, I, when I looked at it, I thought it could go under another one of the, um, seven standards too.
Anybody else have any more, uh, comment on standard one?
I'd like to know Kendall's opinion.
I, I think we're gonna have a tough time getting past seven.
Well, we're talking about one right now.
I understand, I understand. I'm not sure that it's in the public interest or not in the public interest, for number one. I don't have an opinion on one.
I guess, with the spirit of the ordinance, I guess I could go with, with number one. But it's because of what I consider mean, mean grade. They have an existing four-foot fence. So I look at it as, um, you know, they're allowed four foot already. And in a sense, when I look at the southeast corner, um, the sidewalk is about two foot higher than what the, um, the base of the fence is. So in a sense, that gives them a four-foot high fence. So, I guess I could accept number one.
You know, the, from all of the information that we received at the last meeting, um, I understand the concept of mean grade. I understand the concept of accommodation and, um... But what, what we've had is an absolute rejection of allowing the county, the, the construction to come in, level it out, make it balanced, make it work. It was flat-out rejected, at least by what we've been told from the road commission, the engineer, um... And, so, to, to provide a mean grade kind of logic, uh, seems to me to, uh, to defeat the intent of what the, uh, what, the reason for the ordinance and their construction to begin with. It, it's just, and, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, I really do. I just, I, I see it from a completely different point of view. What I see is, it's gonna be my way, and it can't be anybody else's way. And I think it's going to end up, I, I think this is going to end up in some form of litigation somehow. I just don't see it going anywhere other than there. And that may be simply my jaded view. But, and, and I'll concede to that if that's the case, but, um... Yeah, you know, the, the whole, the whole business with the retaining law, um, had we, had we had an environment where we could work with the resident, the, the engineering company, the, the contractors, we would've had a circumstance where there'd be a retaining law there. There's no retaining law, and there's no retaining law there for a good reason. There was no cooperation. And that's, that's simply what we've heard. And I said, we can't establish facts. We didn't take sworn testimony. We can't establish these facts. And because of that, we are open to this, to this township being taken in to a hearing situation. And, and if, I, I think if we go down the road of a variance, we're gonna be subjected to it. And this township's gonna be footing costs that no one yet has anticipated. That's, that's just my view on that. Um...
Okay.
I, I still am in the camp though, that this is a very unique situation where the Heizers didn't buy that lot knowing it was a corner lot. Some fifteen years later, developer blasted through a road, changes their side yard and, and their setbacks, uh, without real understanding of what those changes, what the implications of those changes would be. So I, I, I think you don't even really need to try that hard to understand that it's a unique circumstance.
Yeah. Just like we're not allowed to build on somebody else's property, you are not allowed to change a grade or push water from your property onto somebody else's.
Right.
So, whether they wanted to cooperate or not with changing the grade in that rear corner, they have, they have an established wooded area which adds value to their, their home and their property. So if somebody came in and said, hey, we're gonna remove, we need to remove all these trees on your property so our grade works up here, I would say, then you better go back to the engineer and regrade it because, you know, my property is not a part of this project. So, to me, the Heizer's property line is where this project ends. You can't just sit here and think, well, gee whiz, if they could just grade into their property. That's wrong. The, the civil engineer who designed the roadway should have lowered the crown of the road then to deal with the existing grades on either side of the property.
This, this is exactly my point. It is a point of litigation. There is either negligence or a failure to consider the things that should've been failed, that should've been considered. That's my point.
Okay, so, with that in mind, the way I look at this then is, just like I see any other road work that's done, we have lots of roads that are, that go from two-lane to four-lane. And they deal with the grade, the existing grades on properties on either side. And what happens, just beyond the sidewalk and the road right of way, they build a retaining wall because they've gotta keep that soil from washing onto new pavement or new sidewalks.
Sure.
So, my point of view is that had a retaining wall been built somewhere in there to deal with the grade change, it is practically fifty percent between that, that monument there at the corner up to the sidewalk, there would've been a retaining wall in there. Regardless of whether the Heizers wanted people on their property or not, nobody should be on their property.
Understood.
Their property.
Sure.
So, they have a right not to have extra soil put over the roots of their trees. They have two arborvitae that are dying already because the grade change happened. Now, whether those arborvitae are on their property or not is, but you can see what damage happens to plant material when you start...
I think you're wrong there, Joyce, because I don't think the arborvitae are on their property. And, you know, what caused them to die, I think you're speculating. I don't think you can do that. Um, you know, it may have happened during construction, but it may not have either. Um, but like I said, those arborvitae, if they're not on their property...
I totally agree with you. I totally agree.
The developer has a right to remove them, or the county has a right to have them removed.
And I know that Iowa County does not allow you to plant trees without an approval in their, in the road right of way. I agree with you. Um, but still, I mean, I, anyway.
Your, your point is well taken, truly.
I was gonna make the exact same point. Um, just that the road commission thinking they can just come in and grade into somebody's backyard, that's unacceptable. And I don't blame them one bit if they came to me and said that you're either gonna give me some sort of compensation for it, um, or go through the courts and use eminent domain if you feel strong enough about it. At that point, if they knew that something had, it was gonna be an issue, it should've kicked back to the engineers to look at it, to figure something out. But to say that, oh, they should've just let them go ahead and grade the transition halfway through their backyard.
Uh, uh, I...
Right. And, uh, you said you were...
And that's why you are worried about the legality of it. And I understand that.
And, and there's a, there's a legal confrontation with, well, the, the competent fence installer should know what, what the ordinances are and also where the property line is.
And I agree.
So there's a matter. The competent, uh, engineer should know how to, uh, grade the, the property so that it doesn't deposit all the runoff into the backyard of the neighbor who doesn't want the runoff. Understood. But the problem here is, none of that happened. None of that happened.
So, who is responsible?
Exactly. And that's gonna be a question that eventually is gonna end up in a civil court before a judge, if this goes the route that it appears, I mean, we're already right here, aren't we?
Okay, so, the part of the fence...
It's going through the judicial process as the judicial process begins. This is one of the places it begins.
And I think that would happen regardless if the fence was there or not there.
Yeah, but what, what is the...
The fence has really no bearing on it whatsoever.
If the fence was there or not there, the, the reality doesn't change that, of what, of Tom, what you just said.
Exactly.
That it's graded improperly and they didn't have a right to go into the Heizer's yard.
I don't think it's graded improperly. I don't think that's, that's safe to float from the city sidewalk to the property line.
Well, they create it according to the plans that were cemented. That, is that what you're saying, Greg?
And that meets county standards. And there's been some erosion, but that happens all the time. You know, people plant grass and it degrows all the time. And so that's a relatively minor fix. And to go to court with something that's that simple, doesn't seem to me to make sense. Even though, you know, I can understand what Tom's saying where, you know, it may end up there, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's a practical way of resolving the situation.
It, it, and, and you're right. Because the, the developer and the, and the contractor who built, who did the, the, the roadwork, built it according to plans. And those plans were approved by a lot of different people. And I, I think most likely, the fact that this fence, to me, is, is helping to, you know, retain some soil that's washing in. But the, the larger factor is the grade changed so significantly at that corner that dogs are jumping into their backyard. So therefore, they're like, we have to get a taller fence to be safe. So...
I agree.
See, one of these standards, if we're talking about health, safety, welfare, you know, the fence in this, in this particular instance is, is doing some minor things, like the, the grading and drainage issue. But bigger factor is a safety issue, plus the, the, the wash of headlights, the, the privacy issues that it created when the road went through. That was all approved. It was all approved. I agree.
But now the next question has, is, do you step it down to a four-foot fence at some point? Or do you go on an even plane from the southeast corner to the southwest corner? If you're gonna, or do you just allow a six-foot fence all the way through? So those, those are questions that, if you agree that the southwest east corner deserves a variance, then where, where does it stop? Well, this is just tough.
So, so, am I, am I making this too simple to say that right now, the way I look at it? Because the fence along the south property line is in the road right of way. It's not even part of this property. Really what we should be looking at giving a variance for is the, the fence that's on the east property line. Because that is on Heizer's property according to the survey.
That's a question I had with the survey too, is it shows, uh, the chain link fence being, um, point five feet, um, at the, uh, let's see, what would that be? The west corner, and then point three at the east corner. Um, I didn't go the whole, the fence was touching the wood fence. And that, but it's saying that the wood fence is sitting, what was it? Point three feet to the south of the property line. Uh, we have a difference of nine and, nine and a half inches, but the fences were touching each other. Perhaps the question is how, how, um, the math is, for me, the math, in, in what it seems to be coming down, we're splitting hairs on the fence.
I, I think that's all irrelevant because we shouldn't even be looking at that fence. You know, that's in the road right of way. You know, we're looking at a variance within their property line, so. And to me, that's irrelevant.
But the corner pin too. I looked at the four-by-four is on the property. So then the question is, so, the tickets, the tickets on the other hand are on hanging, right, right of way. So to me is like, we're splitting hairs, a half inch here, half inch there. But what's planted in the ground is on the property.
Well, and, and...
But what's hanging there is...
You always have to put the show side of the fence toward everybody else. So if they flipped it and put the, the panel, then it was fine.
I'd suggest that we go on to number two. I think we gotta feel where we're at with number one.
I think so. I think there's a concurrence with number two.
Well, I guess it doesn't really matter because... Well, I guess it doesn't really matter, because, you know, if all we can talk about, it's seeing what's where people feel, and we can go down each standard, and then they can have a motion and, you know, leave people understand where each person feels or, or discuss each standard, so.
Okay. Well, under ordinance or, uh, standard two, I would concur that it's not, um, just. If, if anybody has an objection or a counter thought or wants to offer an opinion, please, uh, on the board here, speak up. Ordin-, uh, standard number three, there are practical diffi- difficulties in complying with the standards. I think, you know, it seems to me that the unusual conditions of the property are the result of being self-induced. Um, I, I understand that the, the, the development went in, um, but the, the fence was installed and, and there doesn't appear to be any particular condition that is unusual to this property that doesn't exist on the other properties on other corners off of Fortieth Avenue or off Forty-Eighth or off Thirty-Sixth. They seem to all have the same circumstance. You're exposed to traffic, you're exposed to lights, you're exposed to all of the same things.
Except, I can't think of one fence that I looked at as I was driving around the township where somebody could actually jump over, they have, they could have access because the grade has changed significantly. So I would say that one point is the difference that would make me say yes on number three. Because of the fact that they need a six foot fence to get from somebody, you know, entering their rear yard or, or animal entering their rear yard, a dog, which happened with a four foot fence.
But if they followed the proper step that, it could be, then they wouldn't need it.
But it did when, that was the grandfather fence. The fence was there.
The grandfather, the grandfather.
The chain link fence was there.
Yeah.
Prior to, so they did not cause that situation. The situation was caused after the road went in and the grade changed. So that's why they went, they needed to put a six foot fence in, so.
I would agree, I would agree with you on that one.
So you would say yes on number three also?
Yes.
Number four, I can see where that would be, um, standard fifteen, that. I, I'm still gonna remove an item, remember number three and, um, number four, I can understand where that would be met. Um, because it doesn't seem like it's a fence of your detrimental say of the adjacent properties. And in fact, I think they'd be in favor of it.
Yeah, three.
And there is one right across the street, legal nonconforming, six foot.
Number five, is our granting a variance is necessary for preservation of a substantial property right? I don't know that anyone has a right to a front yard six foot fence, but those where it was pre-existing.
That's the one where I leaned towards the, the headlight, where I thought could fit in that one too, um, being a property right. That whole point of being, being able to enjoy your property, um, without being infringed upon by whatever it be circumstance, which would, would be the headlights, also the safety issue with the dog.
Well, and I, you know, you're saying substantial property right. It could be the property rights of their, the neighboring homes too. Um, that think the fence is a good addition to that area. So, so substantial property rights by other, um, possessed by other properties in the vicinity. And I think several of their neighbors liked the fence and agreed to it. So I don't see they, they see that as a, a property right that's being taken away from them. I think they see it as an addition to the property right.
Standard number six, the granting such a variance will not cause any not, existing nonconforming new structure or condition to be increased or perpetuated.
I can just summarize, for me personally, five, six and seven are, are clearly met to me.
How do you rationalize that?
That. With, uh, which one? With five, six or seven?
Particularly seven.
Um.
I, yeah, I, I see where number seven is a yes, because they would not have put that six foot fence if, if, if the things had changed automatically next to the, the existing fence that was grandfathered in. So that's where I could see where seven is not.
Yeah, I would agree with seven too, being a yes, just because they, they didn't ask for the side yard to be turned into a front yard. Um, now you could split hairs as well. They should have known that as soon as they started putting in the road, they better put up a fence quick before the road's complete. Well, had they been told, here's what's gonna change with your property, now this is, you got two front yards now. Here's what you're gonna want, look, you're all ordinances in regards to corner lots, because they're gonna apply, so there's something you gotta do, so I.
And it's, and.
I could see it being, um, they didn't choose to do that. Um, putting up the fence was to solve the problems of the headlights, the dogs. Even so far as they could have put the ugly side of the fence facing the road. I mean, they did it with good intention, the whole thing, which, you know, it's not part of that standard, but I think it's, um, they boil it down to it, it's not a result of inaction. It's a situation they created. Had they not done the well there, they wouldn't have a fence at all. It'd still be the chain link fence.
Seems like a chicken or egg kinda argument. I mean, but for the rain, there wouldn't be any washout. But for the development of the township, there wouldn't be any need for a fence. At some point, it's gotta be concentrated to the property in question and who resides in that property and what have I done to my property? It can't be the consequence of everything that happens around me, in my estimation. In, in my estimation, at some point, I have some personal responsibility here. And I understand that a development occurs, I understand you had no idea it's coming. I understand you bought the place thirty years ago. I fully get all of that. I think that, uh, I think this is just a can we don't wanna open. But I certainly understand the logic, truly understand the logic. Ready for a motion?
Yeah, and I don't know, do we have, um, do you use? To ask him the question?
Do we give the applicant time to say anything or?
No, the, the meeting was open to public comment and, uh, this is the deliberation, deliberation portion of it.
Okay.
Uh, more of a public comment portion at the end of the evening tonight.
Okay.
Um.
Just on stuff in general?
I, I think, I think we can probably sum up that, uh, Hyzers are interested in having this approved. I, I don't think that's.
No, I just, I just wondered, I didn't, I didn't know, I just wondered.
I think as a matter of procedure, I'm not gonna do it, but, um, what we've done on the planning commission before is if somebody wants to reopen a public hearing, you know, a motion can be entertained to do so. And then there has to be support and the motion has to carry. But, um, I'm not exactly sure how the Board of Appeals rules are stated with that, but, um, I'll just show it.
I'm happy to entertain a motion to open the floor if, uh, if someone is so inclined to make it. Is there a motion to open?
I'll make a motion to open the, the meeting to public comment.
Is there a second? I'll support it. Is there any discussion?
I, if we're gonna do this, it's just gotta be new information. And I don't wanna rehash anything else. And I'm not necessarily gonna vote in favor of the motion, I'm not sure based on what other discussion is. But, um, you know, I just wanna make it clear that, you know, we don't wanna get the same information that we'd taken in the original public hearing.
Yes. It seems that we've, uh, we have received volumes. Um, I think we've gotten a significant amount of input. I, I think we have a sense of, um, the logical justifications for the request. I, I think we all are rational, we get it. We're all capable of processing this, I think we all know the reasons for it. Um, however, it's been moved and seconded that we open the meeting to public comment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. The motion's defeated, the meeting is not opened to public comment at this time. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion on variance request eighteen oh five. I would move that the board deny variance request eighteen oh five on the basis of the fact that it fails to meet the standards, the seven standards required and that seven, standard number two is met by, uh, objective assessment and that, uh, standards one, three. One, three, four, five and seven have not been met.
With that motion, you're denying even a six foot fence on the, um, east property line with your adjoining neighbors? Manette, that's, you, you, is that fence not, that's a six foot fence in the neighbor's front yard yet? You know, there's a privacy fence on the, on the adjoining property line to the neighbor of the, on the east?
Up to the, the corner. Yeah.
The neighbor has a six foot fence that comes out from his house and then it joins.
It looks like.
Yeah.
It's on the Hyzer's property.
Yeah. So that fence is, okay, so that fence is okay. Okay.
Is it gonna move that farther back from the neighbors? Thought, yeah, I've gotta pull up a satellite real quick.
Okay.
It looks like we.
And I have a question about that too. When you draw that line.
The chain link on the inside also.
The chain link can make it.
Draw it at the same angle as the front of the house? Or do you draw it perpendicular to the property line? Okay, but that house is, is perfectly.
Perpendicular to the.
Parallel to the rear yard and the, the, the side, or the new front yard.
Say that again, please.
Okay, so from whatever corner. Okay, so, so the front yard there, uh, in that diagram, that's running up and down with the, the smaller front yard, that's really, I mean, it looks like the side of their house. Comes out the back corner to the rear property line. My question is, is that line parallel to the, or perpendicular to the property line? Cause I mean, the Hyzer's house isn't really.
Square, I don't know why.
So. Like this? Okay.
I think the consistency of the application of the, uh, of the fence requirement um, would necessitate that the six foot fence that is in the defined ordinance-based front yard has to go. That would be my conclusion.
Or it has to be revised to four foot.
Right. It has to come into the fence, into compliance with the fence ordinance. I think that's the best position for the township in, in moving forward. So it's been moved that the variance request be denied based on the fact that it doesn't meet the standards, uh, for the reasons defined in the, uh, staff report and the additional reasons stated. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll support it.
Is there any discussion, any further discussion on the matter?
Looking at the satellite map, it would actually, their neighbor's side yard fence would be allowed to protrude farther than what their fence would be allowing. Cause they can come right off the front. You're talking, so how does that work?
Yeah, that is.
Then that's what you, this is incredibly unique. But if neighbor would be allowed to have this fence closer, that they wouldn't be allowed to connect their fence between the two, if they ran it off the corner of their house, a six foot fence, that can connect a, whatever fence.
Do you understand what we're talking about, Manette?
Correct.
Yes.
Google Maps, you can see a satellite.
And there's a six foot fence from the neighbor's house to the road right of way. You know, which is this, this property's southeast property line. And that can stay at six foot?
Does, do both pieces of property need a variance for that? I would suggest that if the neighbor's fence can meet the front of the neighbor's house on the property line, or on the property, that it by default meets the, it, it actually extends over the front of the distance for the Hyzer's home, because their home sits a little bit behind it. So is it their line or the neighbor's line? The, the neighbor has a right to that fence up to that line. Is, is it a necessity to clarify that in the motion? It seems to need to be a de facto definition for this property and for the one next to it.
Do you have any, you have some pictures that you can bring out, don't you, of the site?
Google, Google Maps?
Because then I can look at it and explain better. Um. Yeah, yeah, this section right here, you know, would, would you wanna allow a six-foot fence in there, cause that's all six foot from right there to there?
And that's front yard fence for both properties?
Right. No, that's, that's area, they got a six-foot privacy fence right, right here and then it extends all the way to here.
So you're talking about that short yellow line there?
But it seems reasonable to me to allow variance for this fence right here to remain six foot, you know, because that grade is so far below the, the road and um, I, I just, I think it'll look better and it'll be more functional and it's justified by the grade, but um... I, I'm willing to withdraw my support if you wanna um, craft a new motion that maybe deals just with this fence and then have a separate motion that deals with just this part of, portion of the fence.
So your proposal would be that the six-foot fence goes entirely up and down the east property line from front to back, right up to the front, right up to the south corner?
Not...
Well, it won't be because...
Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, it's a separate piece.
We, we can handle it either way, you know, but I, sometimes I, I kinda think it'd be better to handle in two separate motions, um...
So, so you're some...
Have one motion for this fence and then one motion for this fence.
And I'm missing the rationale for leaving the east fence in a six-foot, east fence in the front yard and requiring a removal of a six-foot fence at any location on the south front yard.
I, yeah, because, yeah.
It's true.
The grade really drops off on this point according to the road and so, you know, it sounds the height from the road, it, it almost acts as a three-foot fence when it comes for side of cheering and, um, you know, it also helps with containment of air mold and, and um, privacy for both houses too, but um, but we don't, I mean, we don't have to do it that way, there's already a motion on table with support and if I am willing to draw my support, but you don't wanna withdraw your motion, then we deal with, deal with it as stated, so.
Well, and that's what I noticed too was unique when I looked at, if you're in the road looking at that fence height in the side yard, that six-foot fence is literally at the foundation level of the neighbor's house, so if you go with Google Street View, it's, and you follow that foundation, which is below the floor level, eleven mile inches, that's the height of that fence, so when you put it in 3D perspective, six foot sounds like a lot, but when you're standing there looking at it, you see that the six-foot fence is actually where the neighbor's feet are.
The grade continues to drop as you head to the neighbor.
Right, that's why this is just a very incredibly unique one, we probably never have anything like this again.
Hopefully we won't, hopefully they just take care of it with the planning commission and so.
Very unique.
Well, do we, do we, okay, so if Tom doesn't change his motion, which I, um, doesn't want to, and we need to vote on his motion and your second? That's up to him.
All right, so, so there is a, you, you made an ammendatory motion?
I, I didn't do any, I offered to withdraw my support, so there's two ways we can do it, one, we can continue to vote on the motion, we'll see once it passes or not, and then we'd be, have to open to a new motion, the other thing you can do if you want is, if I offered to withdraw my support and you offered to withdraw your motion, then we can start out with a new one, but um, it, it's completely up to, you know, the way, the path that we're on right now is to vote on this current motion, have discussion and vote on this current motion.
Um... So you're not gonna vote on ammendatory motion?
I'm not voting, I want, no.
You're not voting, okay. I um... I think the fundamental principles from which I'm approaching this un- uh, and are just unchanged and, and... So I think uh, I'm, I'm not interested in withdrawing the motion.
Okay, so do we vote then?
Is there any more discussion?
I was just gonna say the unique part is, I mean, the four-foot chain link fence is there, it gets to stay regardless, so we're talking two-foot difference. Now, the whole right-of-way issue is a different thing, but I got feeling road commission's gonna be dealing plus or minus a foot, we're not concerned about plus or minus.
Four inches?
Yeah, I'm sure it would be like, we just want it to be done, um, because of the unique grade, everything that's going on, isn't just a simple corner lap.
Right.
Even elevation throughout the neighborhood, this is incredibly unique.
It seems to me that that's a step that precedes this step. If the commit, if the road commission wants to give them a permit to locate that in perpetuity in their road right-of-way, then that's something that, that the uh, road commission, I mean, it's the road commission's property, we can't grant the Hyzers a variance for the road commission property, the road commission gets a variance for their property.
Right, yeah, that's why they said township, you deal if, if it meets your criteria, do you allow a six-foot fence, uh, as it is? If you're okay with that, then...
The term was may, may consider, there was no definite on that.
I think support was in Tom's mouth and maybe the direction should have been asking after we found out that it was in the road commission's right-of-way, then the, maybe the, the proper tact was to ask the road commission if, if it can stay, and we still have no jurisdiction over that. And there would, I think there would be a strong argument too, saying the corner pin shows that what's planted there, and then with split hairs on, the tickets are hanging in the air, they're not planted in the ground, so what constitutes a location of a fence, the center of the overall depth of that fence, and that would be for them to determine if it was, that's where it's set, so.
Well, what we have to work with is the survey, and the survey indicates it's over the property line, so, you know, we can't, we can't split that here, son, this is what's been given to us.
That's why I keep going back to the pictures I took of the corner pin looking at it, and I understand paper, um, but I also read a lot of emails that said, my estimation is about six inches over, and your estimation from, by visitor from paper, from paper. From my estimation of looking at the paper, the road is exactly centered in the sixty foot, but actually going on the site and measuring is not.
Not, I saw that too.
And that's the whole thing, is there's no, I don't have anything solid and concrete other than what I saw with my eyes going out there looking at the corner pin monument, which is...
Well, I saw it as well.
At first there was that, is that just a, a plat monument that doesn't...
But the other thing, the other thing you don't have though, Michael, is the, is the cast of the property line up to the next corner.
And that was the other tricky part, you tried to slide it off the telephone pole, but the telephone pole is warped, so it's... But then when I see that they're saying the corner pin location doesn't match up with the drawing, then I'm saying, well, even, does the front one match up, even if I could visualize line, I don't, there's really no easy way to do it, and I'm not sure if there's a standard for surveyors where they say plus or minus three inches based on GPS or whatever factors are, cause there's no, how do you accurately measure down to the, an inch plus or minus?
I'm, I'm gonna vote against the motion because I feel, I feel this is a correct motion for the south property line, but um, not for the east property line, so um, and with that, I'd like to call for the question. Go for the vote.
Well, as I've, um, as I think this through, um, this, the motion was incorrectly characterized, it should be an affirmative motion to approve the variance as opposed to, to deny the variance, because if we vote not to deny, that does not mean we approve.
Right, I was gonna ask that question.
I would like to withdraw the motion on that basis, you know, withdraw my support. Thank you, and I would like to re-characterize the motion to, to uh, approve the variance request. I think it has to be voted in the negative, it would require no votes to deny the variance request, uh, therefore, in that light, um, I would propose that uh, make a motion to approve the variance request, um...
And that would be for the south property line only, or are we including the, all the... Uh, we are re, um, including the east property lines also?
I think there's a consensus to approve for the south property line, so um, in the interest of uh, the, the unity of the board, I can concede to approve the south property line and uh, and to uh, exclude the, I'm sorry, include the east property line and exclude the south property line, so there's, the south property line is the fence that's in the road right-of-way, correct? The east property line is the property between the two houses. So we would approve the east property line fence and decline the south property line fence.
Can you read what you have written down?
Yes. And to allow the six-foot fence on that east property line. Okay, so we, we've managed to cobble together a motion there?
Run over it one more time, so the six-foot wood fence will stay, would stay in this motion on the east property line up to the corner pin. But not the south, the south six-foot wooden fence.
Because we would be giving a variance for fence that's not on their property along the south property line.
I think we're really, we're giving them...
Exactly, and so that's why I don't even think, because of what you're saying, that we even include the fence that's on the south property line, because it's not on Georgetown Township property, I think if we're giving a variance, it's for the six-foot fence that's on Georgetown Township property, and then let Ottawa County Road Commission decide what to do with the fence that's on their property.
I don't agree with that, because there's a request for a six-foot privacy fence in the front yard setback, and that means that it's on the Hyzer's property, so we're dealing with that request, we're not dealing with this particular fence right here, in my opinion, and we're dealing with a variance request for a six-foot fence.
On their property, okay.
Location doesn't matter, we're talking about just a fence in theory.
In the front yard. Okay.
And then it would be up to the road commission to decide, is, are we okay with it, and do we have a problem with it, based on what our decision is? Basically, if we say no to a six-foot fence, then the issue for them is done, they have to deal with it.
So just to make it clear, we're, we're voluntary approve a variance for the um, east property, east property line and um, but this is not included variance for the south property line, and then um, if this motion passes, then defining the fact will say it doesn't meet certain standards, certain of the standards, is that correct?
Right. How are we reconciling the south though?
We're assuming that does meet the southern standards, but we're um, specifying that there's certain standards of the southern that are not in that with the south property line, is that correct?
That's what you need too, cause it's still six foot at that corner, on both sides, so if it meets the standard on the east property line, those same standards for that corner should apply to the front. And that's why I think if...
The front, the grade is similar to the, the height of the city sidewalk and that grade comes up, it's only two foot below the, the sidewalk height at that southeast corner property line.
Southeast corner.
From that point on to the west, the grade continues to rise.
Right, and that's why it is six foot when you get...
Right.
To the, to the west, but in the other corner.
Yeah, it's just not easy.
And that's why, I, it's so close that, I think with that corner being, if it meets the southern standards at that corner for the east, I think it would meet it for the front, with the exception of the far corner, but then that's what the variance is for.
Well, no, those...
If we approved the six foot as the variance application was submitted, it would be up to the road commission to kill that, because we'd say, okay, yeah, it's fine, then the road commission would come and say, coming down, but we would do our part. Cause it did meet those southern standards. Tricky one because of the, the location of it being on that.
Even motion is somewhat unique, it seems like, so.
So the intent of the motion is that the east property line fence remains and that there's no approval for front yard fence on the uh, south front yard.
Do we not even include that in our, in our, our um, issue of the variance, because again, well, okay, Greg, Greg explained that, but to me, the fence is in the road right-of-way, so I'm responding to what fences on Georgetown Township property or the, the Hyzer's property, which is in Georgetown Township.
I think the key is, we wouldn't be giving a variance for, for that location of the fence, we're giving a variance for the height. Because there, in the application, there is no location of it, so we're not saying, nope, we're giving them approval to put it right where it is.
Gary had a four-foot fence.
It's already, we've got some buffer there, so it would be, we'd, we'd say, oh, as presented, there is no location, so we're not even discussing the fact of where it's located, that would be for the road commission to take it from where we decide, like, yep, that's fine, road commission would come and say, on our property, gotta go, or...
Right. Technically, this is a trespass issue between the Hyzers and the county. It really has nothing to do with us.
Right, locations of it, that's why we're just strictly voting on the height. Being a variance from our ordinance which says it's not allowed in the front.
Right.
But not saying, you get to put it where it is, you get to keep it where it is.
It, it doesn't approve a fence there, it, I mean, a fence can't be there because from the ordinance, uh, it's in the road right-of-way and it's not their property, and who knows what the county will do. What we're saying is, we'll give an, we'll uh, give a variance to maintain a six-foot fence on that east property line, uh, south to the, through the front yard to that corner pin, provide a remains on the property, uh, and no variance for a six-foot fence in the south front yard.
And they can keep the existing fence there, they just gotta take two foot off and then they gotta roll the dice with the county. Or the township.
So we need to k- take two foot off, like cut down the wood fence, two foot?
Comes a four-foot fence.
That's what they would have to do if the, if this motion is passed. Because they got the four-foot fence crammed out of it in with the existing chain link, so if they cut two foot off that fence, then it's up to the county or the township to, if they choose to enforce that the fence is in the road right-of-way.
I don't think that's allowed though, is it, cause you're modifying, I mean... Because you're modifying, I mean, the chain link could stay. No question there. But to build another, isn't there, the ordinance says you can't, with the exception of the act of God, repair, replace. Oh, I thought that was just that twenty foot off, uh. No, four foot is allowed. Three foot, you can go right up to the right of way. Oh, I thought it was, when I'd asked you before, you said just that the required front yard, not, not like.
Like to call for the vote.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we, that the, uh, board grant a variance request eighteen oh five as it applies to the east property line for the six-foot wood fence. Um, and that, that meets the standards, uh, and that we de, and that does not include a variance for the, uh, south property line. I think we can make a constructive argument that, um, on the east property line, um, the standards are satisfied by virtue of the fact that, uh, the elevation changes on the east property, uh, created the condition that was described, um, which places a six-foot fence at the equivalent of the base of the neighbor's backyard. Uh, that's a, that's kind of a different issue than, uh, what's occurring in the front yard. Um. I don't know that there is any way that the neighbor or that the, uh, Hyzers could have been expected to appreciate the significant changes to the overall, um, landscaping there. Um, and I think, uh, the, the public health and safety is con, is considerably enhanced by that east property line fence. Um, I think the south property line fence, I think this, um, this board would be remiss in allowing a six-foot fence up there for the reasons that I had stated throughout the, the hearing tonight. So for those reasons, uh, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
I, I was gonna, oh.
Go ahead, discussion.
Do they make a motion to amend that to, with a, uh, south wood, six-foot wood fence to maintain a four-foot from the crown of the road? So then it's kind of following the same logic of keeping six-foot on the east. So, but then it's gonna taper down to follow that same grade. Uh, if that's not too far of a stretch. So it would taper down if, rather than you cut the whole thing down to four-foot? Because then you're in, you're not blocking the headlights at the four-foot. So it's kind of the best of both worlds?
In my estimation, we're further ahead to, uh, to maintain the standard that allows the four-foot fence based on the, um, based on the, uh, location of measure for that four-foot fence. I, I think, I think the concept of mean, I, while I understand it, I appreciate what it intends to accomplish. Um, I just, I believe the, the, this board is going down a road that is not going to be, uh, productive for the township and the law and law. That's my opinion. The motion can be made. Um, would you like to put that motion forward?
I don't think I get the support for it, so.
So we are allowing fence in the front yard only on the east property lines, not on the south property line. Six-foot fence. The four-foot chain link fence can stay or the, the wood fence, if the, if, uh, Ottawa County Road Commission will allow it, can be maintained at four-foot. Is what this motion is saying.
The zoning initiative approval.
Well, I would, I would argue that if the, if the county road commission comes forward and says, you know what? We want a fence back there. That would constitute their backyard.
You mean the, the one on the south property line?
Yes.
If the road commission.
If the road commission's property. It is not the Hyzer's property.
So what you're saying is if we deny this or approve to deny this, that then the law is a baddest going to the road commission and asking for the road commission's approval to keep the six-foot fence? Oh, I see.
Not the Hyzer's property.
No, it's not.
We can't give them any authority to put anything there.
Regardless of if we said it can stay, it still has to go if the town, if the road commission says it has to go.
Right.
Because the government, they get to do whatever they want. They're not gonna have to apply for a variance to have six-foot.
Well, they don't need a variance. It's their backyard. Their front yard is banally. It happens to be a, what, an eight-foot deep yard? Ten-foot deep yard?
That's an interesting twist in favor of the Hyzer's.
It complies with the law in its strictest elements. And it takes the township out of this conversation about who's responsible for doing something with the fence? Who's responsible for all of these elements of the swell or the, uh, the drainage? Uh, and it has the potential of satisfying what the Hyzers want. We can't speak for the county, but.
So the unique circumstance in the variance that we're about to vote on is that the, the elevation change on the east side is so great that we understand the, the need for something taller than three or four feet. Correct? And on the south side, we're saying, not ours.
Okay. So I'm not trying to assume what, what John, uh, Guderez? Is that how you say his name? Uh, okay. I'm, I'm not trying to assume that I understand what John is saying here. But he said, given the circumstances, a road commission may consider issuing a permit to allow the fence to remain. However, if the township decides that the fence must be relocated or removed, I will always support that decision.
We're not saying that needs to be removed or relocated. We're saying.
We're not saying at all.
No, we're saying it's the road commission's decision.
What we're doing is granting a variance for a six-foot fence on the east property line. And we're saying that we're not granting a variance for a six-foot fence in the south front yard. That's all we're saying.
Okay. Well, my concern is that the road commission is gonna say, okay, it's not allowed, so we're not gonna allow it.
Maybe. But it may be a way for them to appease the whole situation. And, um, so it depends on how they decide to handle it. But it does give the Hyzers another option, which I think they should be very grateful for, so. I'm ready to vote.
It has been moved and seconded that, uh, variance request be approved as it was detailed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion is carried. Uh, hang on, let me get, reread that section of, uh, twenty-eight point nine. Section twenty-eight point nine of the zoning ordinance states, "The decision of the Board of Appeal shall be final. However, any person having an interest affected by any such decision shall have the right of appeal to the circuit court on questions of law and fact." Mr. and Mrs. Hyzer, that resolves the matter for us. Um, the property, the fence on the east property line is approved to remain there. We have simply not granted a variance for a six-foot fence in the south front yard. We'll entertain a question. Sure. The, the fence is on the Ottawa County Road Commission property. It is not on your property. So this, this board can't say to you, that fence must be removed in.
But I would talk to the township office. And I want, we don't handle enforcement. They handle enforcement. And if they have some powers that we're not aware of, I would definitely talk to them tomorrow morning.
All right, um. All right, we're moving on to section four, which is public comment. So at this time, we'll, uh, open the meeting to public comment. Please approach and provide your name and address, sir. It's possible that the township would, would wanna get a legal opinion on that conclusion. That's the zoning board's conclusion. Um, that doesn't mean it's, it's. Understood. I think the township will likely go for a legal opinion to decide whether or not the road commission can, can allow a fence to be installed there. I can't speak for the township board, uh, and that, I don't. You, you should go talk to the, uh, township enforcement and also to the county. Is there any other public comment? It's okay, we're open for public comment. An address, please, sir.
Yes, I do.
But it's for the, for the records.
Um, Mr. Healy.
This doesn't seem to be anything that the Board of Appeals addresses. That would be something at the township enforcement? Cause they're not, not the Board of Appeals. Well, we can't handle that, you know?
Mr. McCloskey, maybe the best bet would be to submit a formal written request.
And I think it's.
Did you cite the per, uh, did you cite the particular sections? And they were, and it was determined that there was not a violation of those sections? I, I'm thinking that if, if the consensus on the reading was that it was a violation, then they would have been ticketed. So I'm concluding that they did not conclude it was a violation. What we'll do. Okay. What we'll do is we will request that Manette revisit the ordinance and have, uh, the code enforcement officer take, take a look at it. We, we will request that Manette have the code enforcement officer take a look at it. Okay. Mr. McCloskey, we're gonna have to close the public portion of the meeting because, uh, you're at your limit for the three-minute, uh, portion. So at this stage, we're gonna have to ask, is anyone else interested in public comment? We will, we, we, we're asking Manette to take a look at that and to have Rich take a look at it. Your points noted. Your points noted, okay? Thank you.
After. I'm sorry. As I say, if you wanna come talk to me after, um, after me in just a couple minutes here, I can give you more.
I'll, I'll still move.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the meeting be closed to public comment, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion's carried. Um, we have other business, which is a proposed change to the meeting times. Uh, it's been offered that we, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to change our regular monthly meeting times from seven thirty PM to seven PM. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that the board, uh, change the meeting times to seven PM, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's carried, I'm sorry, I got one more topic. Um, I'd like to make a motion that this board recognize the contributions of our zoning administrator, Manette Minier, because, um, recently, over the last several months, we've had some rather complicated issues. And her staff reports, as well as the support she's brought in from the township, the township's attorney, um, have, has provided us with the tools that we've needed to understand what we're charged with doing and getting it done. And most importantly, that by exercising her duty and her obligation to enforce the zoning ordinance, everyone seems to blame her when they're told that they can't do something. And she's simply doing what she's paid to do, and we appreciate that, it's difficult. And I just, uh, I think the board should commend you for that, so.
And I'd like to, I'd like to add that you have raised the bar when I compare other zoning administrators when I'm doing my work. So I always think, well, Manette does that, why don't you? So I think you do a, a very exceptional job, and I appreciate that.
So it's been moved and seconded that we just give a hearty affirmation to Manette for her efforts. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's carried. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Greg, seconded by Joyce. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.